Okay. Can I make a motion to reconvene the regular meeting of the Proviso Townsfolk High School Board of Education? So, second. Mr. or Dr. Fisher, please call the board.
Ms. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Sixon?
Aye.
Mr. Capo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher, aye. Ms. Barberham?
Aye.
Ms. Smith? Absent. Most cares.
Please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. It is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Dr. Fisher, can you please read the mission statement?
Through expectations of excellence and by providing equitable educational opportunities to empowered students, our graduates are prepared for college careers and to serve as contributing members of the romantic roles.
Thank you. At this time, the Board of Education opens the floor for public comments. The board will receive public comments from any individuals present this evening and have submitted a request to address the board per the established procedures. Comments will be limited to three minutes and according to the board policy two to thirty. We believe that all participants in the meeting desire the best outcomes for our students, families, and communities. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be archived and available on the district website.
And one comment from Philip Paxton.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I'm here for a few things. One, I was taking a look at your bills and payroll. And there was issues at some point with the credit card. I know there's no one to ask about the credit card bills anymore. And that number, as far as payment, is quite high. When I look at the amount of conferences, now don't get me wrong, conferences good. If you don't go, you don't grow. And I have sense enough to know that. I just think that at one point in time, when both went on conferences, we knew as this community, if we wanted to take a look at that, in your bills and payrolls, the person's that card's name was written. All I see is conference, 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 not who's attending the conference. After all, it's our taxpayer dollars and we should know. My other concern is board member removal from office. That concerned me because the people elected you. Your constituents elected you. I don't know who your target is, or even if there's a target on the board. But this is not the way to go. This is a slippery slope. This is straight out of, in my opinion, playbook of the Don, Donald Trump. We, you, don't have authority to remove anybody from the board. If they have failed to attend three consecutive registered board meetings, you also stay in here. And I'm sure the attorney put it together, you also stay in here that if the intermediate service center, R O E, didn't or denied removing someone, then you would go to the Illinois State Board of Education. I also have sense enough to know they don't have the authority to remove anyone. Removing an elected official is like the act of Congress. Don't know if you know that, but I ask that this board take a very good look at this. I also ask for those of you that may not know or know, that you take a look at the Illinois compulsory statutes, chapter one oh five, school one oh five I L C S, school code, article ten and ten eleven. It'll tell you everything you need to know. Thank you, but this is a slippery slope. And we're getting to the point where we're gonna start moving board members off the board. For one, boards tend to, not everybody get along, so if I don't care for you, look for a way to get you off the board. Now, I may be wrong, but what I'm reading here is very disturbing. So, I ask that you take a good look at that because when I read article ten and ten eleven, it said a lot of things. So, I ask that you do that. And before I stood here, I also reached out to a school law attorney, but we gave great inspection about this. Have a great night.
Thank you. There are no more.
Uh, Mr. Wallner?
Now, moving on to our favorite part of the meeting is recognition, and I will start with Principal Sanchez from P M S A.
Good evening, everybody. So, as you know, we established a recognition system at P M S A where each department has a chance to nominate four students, one for each A level, and then we have a python of the month that exhibits our motto, which is, you know, drill excellence and broaden kindness. So, I'll start with the nomination for python of the month, which goes to Maria Fernanda España. Is she here? Very quickly, Lady Fernanda is a exceptional student. She is the proud ninth grade president of class of twenty twenty nine. And Ms. Martinez, in conjunction with administration, nominated her for her kindness, responsibility, and genuine willingness to help others. I'll turn it over to Ms. Stampa.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Superintendent Moven, this is a pleasure to be here. This is one of my favorite times to be here because I get to recognize four amazing P M S A students. This is my joyous time. So, I don't know if they're here, but first we've got freshman Mario Martinez. She is the math department and nominated Mario for student of the month because Mario is excelling in all his classes. He's a pleasure to have in the classroom. He is consistently thoughtful of asking questions and helps the peers around him. His kindness extends beyond academics, as willing to help others, and he truly deserves the recognition for the hard work he's put in. So, Mario, congratulations. We love to recognize you. Alright, secondly, I have Miguel Carrasco. Is Miguel Carrasco here?
Oh, handbag.
Somebody to choose from, but Miguel truly is a passionate and interested in math. Always looking to go the extra mile, inquisitive of science, beyond math, inside and out. Miguel energizes the lesson. He participates. He questions. And he's a great leader in the classroom, always to give a helping hand. So, Miguel, congratulations. We love you. Alright, thirdly, we have junior Jala Hoover, who I know I saw in the back. So, Jala, come on down.
Sorry, Jala. I lost a letter in there.
She...
You not love me. It's my turn.
No, my twins are back there.
She is a prime example of hard work, kindness, dedication, ready to lead a hand, and her classmates eager to learn, brings positive energy to the classroom. She's committed to excellence, supportive spirit makes her school community stronger every single day. She constantly demonstrates outstanding effort and leadership and respect for positive attitude and commitment and academic growth, make her an excellent role model. And I got to be a part of it here and thank you all. Alright, done with guys. Lastly, I have senior Alfonso. I saw him back there. Had him as a freshman. Alfonso has constantly demonstrated excellence in leadership at his time here at Proviso. I've had the pleasure of witnessing Alfonso make remarkable mathematical abilities, his passion for learning, his commitment to his peers. Alfonso scored a four on A P Calculus A B. As a junior, some brag, he has excelled in A P Calculus B C. Can't wait to see what you're gonna score on that one. Splaying not only profound understanding of concepts, but his ability to apply them creatively and effectively. His analytic skills are truly impressive. He tackles challenging problems with a level of confidence and insight that sets him apart from his peers. Alfonso approaches each mathematical challenge with enthusiasm and determination, often going beyond the curriculum to explore advanced topics independently. He is more than prepared for a major in engineering, and I can't wait to see what he accomplishes. He has such a bright future, and I got to be a part of it at one point. Yay!
Next, we'll have Principal Christian from Proviso West.
Good evening, everyone. Proviso West would like to acknowledge two students. The first being Damaya. Now, Damaya, would you like to come up? Damaya is a sensational student who will be graduating, actually.
Oh, this is her last year.
Her counselors and her entire team ranting and raving about her because right now her G P A is four point oh. She's graduating early, has not ever had a discipline record, has only been tardy twice. And she is exceeding above and beyond measures, so she is an inspiration to us all. Did you bring them? Yeah, you gotta go get it. So, a round of applause for Damaya. Our next student that we would like to really feature is Ace Falcone. Ace, can you come up? So, I just came here for a minute. So, Ace, we're really proud of Ace. Wanna come to this side? If you give me just thirty seconds of your time, I'll read a little bit about Ace. Ms. Scoop, Mrs. Scoopers and Mrs. Jones ran down and said that we really needed to feature Ace. I wanted to read a couple of things. Ace is the recipient of the Quest Bridge National College Math Scholarship. He has been awarded a full, full four-year scholarship at the University of Richmond. Currently, he is the only recipient of this scholarship within our entire district. So, I wanted to give you kind of a press release that they are submitting for Ace. Ace has been admitted to the University of Richmond with a full four-year Quest National College Math Scholarship. Ace is an outstanding Proviso West math and science academy panther, currently ranking number three in his class with a four point seven six weighted G P A. Ace is committed to community service as a member of the key club, the craft club. Later this year, he will end up visiting the National Honor Society. We are extremely proud of Ace and his accomplishments and his commitment to service, knowing he will continue this path at the University of Richmond. We congratulate him on this excellent achievement and wish him the best in his future endeavor. So, we wanted to honor them, and what they received today is because, you know, the east-west game's tomorrow. So, Mr. Ho, we're wearing these shirts and it says Proviso West right on the front, but then you can see on the back it says Ace and the box it says, "We're better than the rest." So, we wanted to show them.
Thank y'all.
What'd you share? One, two. Oh, she's holding the front. Yeah, you show the front and you show the back. How about that?
They sent it to Mr. Ho.
One, two, three. Alright.
Thank you.
I'm nervous to let Mr. Ho go last, but go ahead, Ms. Jones. Go Proviso East.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
And everyone else, I also wanna recognize, they left? My twins left? I have my twins here. They're back from college, so they reached out to me. They're successful, just honored. She's still here at P M S A. But this past weekend, Proviso East hosted its annual breakfast with Santa event at Proviso East. I want to give special recognition to the National Honor Society that put the event together with their hope, with their sponsors, Ms. Joseph Beck, Ms. Billy, Abilié, the culinary teachers, twenty teachers, and about twenty-five staff members, served over a hundred and fifty kids from the Proviso community that came out and participated in. It's a wonderful event that we host every year. It's something we look forward to. They put a lot of time in decorating and setting up and also breaking down the cafeteria just to give the young kids that come through an opportunity. So, I did not wanna, I wanted everybody to come to the game tomorrow. So, with the late notice of trying to get them to come tonight, we're just gonna celebrate them. I got some special gifts for them for putting this together, and it is something that we look forward to doing as we move into the holiday season. So, special recognition for the National Honor Society of Proviso East. They're all doing well in school. They're all on track to graduate, and they're all making a difference in the community. So, special shout out to them. Thank you.
Tonight, come on up. I didn't know you were here.
I wanna introduce a special student to her, and I want her to tell you about her experience here in West and how she is excelling not only in her classes, but as a student and what she's doing and how she's made a tremendous impact upon West by being in several different things. So, I'll let you talk to them for a couple of minutes.
Hey, I just got, oh, I'm Tamai. So, I just got into National Honor Society. And I'm in Club of Twenty Twenty Six.
Club of Twenty Twenty Six? And what are you excited about for the future?
Oh, I have been trying, doing what I'm trying to be, living it. So, I'm excited about the future.
So, we wanted to feature her as well. I didn't know she was here, so congratulations to Bayra as well.
Thank you.
Does anybody else? Just might pull somebody up.
We're good. We the best.
Alright, now, I don't typically opt out and do these, but I am gonna take advantage of an opportunity to share something that I know that you know about, but I wanna make sure that our entire community knows about the actions of Tremaine Franklin. I have the honor tonight of recognizing an employee whose actions reflect the very best of who we are as a district. At Proviso West, one of our students experienced a moment of deep personal crisis late one night. In that critical moment, social worker Tremaine Franklin received a message that no educator ever hopes to receive. What happens next is a testament to Tremaine's character, his professionalism, and his dedication to the well-being of our students. Without hesitation, he acted immediately, alerting school administration, and ensuring that first responders reach the student's home in time to prevent a potentially tragic outcome. Within minutes, the student was safe and receiving care immediately. But Tremaine did not stop there. He went on to the family's home and remained with them well into the early morning hours, offering support, comfort, and stability during an incredibly vulnerable moment. His presence made a profound difference. It is not an exaggeration to say that his actions that night saved a life. Tonight, on behalf of the Board of Education of the Proviso District Two oh nine, we recognize Tremaine Franklin for his extraordinary compassion, quick action, and dedication to student safety. It is my privilege to present this to you with the certification of recognition, with our deepest gratitude for all you do for our students, our family, and our district. Tremaine, can you come down? Put you in the middle of the court around us.
Yep. I'm gonna give that short one. Alright, write this word. One, two, three. Hey, was your mom?
Oh, your mom's here.
Come on, Mom. Come on. Alright, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Got it from our recognition?
That's it, please.
Thank you again to all of our students and Tremaine. I was gonna open up the floor to any other board members that had anything to say. You know, David, I wanted to speak for months. I'll let you go first.
Oh, with regards to... So, first, you know, as I say, you're celebrating your one-year anniversary in a very... Your start was highly unorthodox, sort of coming in basically the middle of the year, but I just wanna express gratitude to you for taking a chance at Proviso and come in and bringing, establishing a team, a strong team, and leading the district toward positive change. So, I'm very grateful.
We did celebrate your one-year anniversary at the community of the whole meeting, which was the, like, exact date. Which was, which was weird, so. Did I hear that? Is that what you said? So, I was also gonna give a shout out to N H S at East because the Santa breakfast is one of my absolute favorite events because the students dressed as Santa is absolutely, like, the height of perfect Christmas, like, pictures and cards. So, I always look forward to see what Santa will look like because it's always the best Santa. So, thank you to N H S. They always do great stuff. And just, I wanted to kinda talk to the community and give everybody some thanks for the approaching holidays. I wanna extend my heartfelt gratitude to every member of our school community. The season offers us meaningful opportunities to reflect on our progress, celebrate our successes, and look forward to with hope and optimism. To our students, your resilience, determination, and enthusiasm continue to inspire us. Whether in the classroom, on the field, on the stage, or in service to others, you represent the very best of Proviso. We are proud of all of you you've accomplished and excited to see what comes in your hopes for you. To our teachers, thank you for your dedication and commitment to student success. Your efforts, both seen and unseen, made a profound difference in the lives of our young people every single day. To our staff, from our support personnel to our transportation, nutrition, office staff, technology, security, maintenance, and custodial teams, each of you plays an essential role in creating safe, welcoming, and well-functioning schools. Your hard work ensures that students and staff have the environment and support they need to thrive. We deeply appreciate your service and dedication. To our administrators, thank you for your leadership, your vision, and your commitment to continuous improvement. Your guidance and strategic planning drive our district forward and support the success of every student, teacher, and staff within Proviso. To our parents and families, your partnership is vital. Thank you for your support, your involvement, and your trust in District Two oh nine. Together, we can continue to create strong foundations for our student growth and achievement. To our community members and partners, Proviso is strengthened by your engagement, generosity, and belief in the power of public education. We are grateful to your collaboration for the many ways you invest in our schools and students. As we enter this holiday season, I hope each of you finds time to rest, recharge, and enjoy meaningful moments with the loved ones. Make New Year for continued growth, renewed purpose, and opportunities that uplift every member of the Proviso community. On behalf of the Board of Education, I wish you a joyful holiday season and a bright and hopeful new year. And I hope to see you at the East versus West game tomorrow and the holiday tournament.
Hey, moving on to the superintendent's report, as I traditionally do, I will turn this over to Dr. Dale.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
At this time, we will have Labor City present our audit information.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go over the audit of financial statements. So, there's two books that are before you. It's the one that has kind of this spiral-looking cover, and I'll go over some things, but I was hoping you could do is just open the booklet to a page, and if you could open it to page nine and ten, and just leave that open in front of you. So, we completed our audit of the district's financial. So we completed our audit of the district's financial statements. Uh, the scope of our audit is, is fairly robust. We provide assurances over your audited financial statements. Uh, there's a state form called Enableable Financial Report. It's a regulatory report that has to be filed with the Illinois State Board of Education. Uh, they ask also to be audited by your external auditor. Uh, the district is required to have a single audit performed, which is a federal compliance audit. Uh, if an entity expends over $750,000 in federal awards, you have to have this particular type of audit performed. So we look at certain programs, uh, and render an opinion as to your compliance and authority control issues that were identified. Uh, that document also reports the schedule of federal awards, uh, expenditures and we render assurances on that document as well. And then lastly, there's a report that has to be filed with the Grant Accountability and Transparency Unit. Um, really basically it's called a consolidated year-end financial report and they require your auditor to, to audit that document and provide assurances over it. So all of these individual documents get scrutinized, they're based on your financial information and the auditor's responsibility at the end is to render an opinion on those documents. So everything except for the single audit has been finalized. Um, the federal government has had some, some difficulties in finalizing their rules for the auditors to perform the single audits. It's called the 2025 Compliance Supplement. That document was delayed and finalized right before Thanksgiving. We've used the draft of that compliance document to reform our audit procedures. And based on all of the work that we've done so far, I don't anticipate any significant changes from an unmodified audit opinion, but we haven't completed that fully yet. We have until the end of March to do that. Uh, we'll be completing those over, you know, probably January and February. But really right now, as I stand before the board, it's not finalized. We don't anticipate any changes from an unmodified opinion. If that changes, I'll definitely let the administration know, we can come back and talk differently. Um, really at the end of the day, our audit recorded an unmodified audit opinion. An unmodified audit opinion is the highest level assurance that you can receive from the external auditor that your financial statements present fairly in all material respects with generally account, generally accepted accounting principles. So, especially when you hear, well, your auditor comes clean, unmodified audit opinion. Yeah. Um, what I want to just go over very briefly, because these financial statements have a lot of numbers in there. There's just a couple of key things that I just want to point out to the board and anyone from the community that's, that's listening. Is on page nine and 10, this is really on the income statement for the school district. So you have your funds presented in column format, revenues at the top, your expenditures in the middle. And then right before you get into a category called Other Financing Sources and Uses, uh, there's a line that says excess or practices deficiencies of the revenues over expenditures. Okay? At page nine, the general fund, the operations maintenance fund, the transportation fund, the municipal retirement fund. I like to think of those funds really as like kind of the day-to-day operational funds of the school district. Uh, and what you can see on that line, excess for deficiency of revenues, is that all of those funds, with the exception of the municipal retirement fund, um, operated within their means and had some surpluses during the year. Um, the municipal retirement fund had a decrease in fund reserves of about $85,000. But, but if you look at the ending fund balances on the very last line, um, which is about $3.3 million, that's a very healthy reserve in light of the expenditures that that fund occurs on an annual basis. So operationally, these funds are, are doing really well. Um, they're, they're all working within their, you know, operational resources. And then if you look at page 10, uh, the debt service fund is really only around to, you know, essentially collect property tax revenue and then pay off your outstanding bonds. Uh, that fund particularly kind of churns within itself, is really not getting a lot of attention because it just kind of runs and hurts on power essentially. You see there's still a residual fund balance and then that's an accumulation over a period of time with the timing of when the bond payments need to be made. The capital projects fund is a fund that had a lot of activity over the past five or six years, uh, in the school district. And when you first look at it, you see that there's a deficit of about $5.2 million. But that's not necessarily concerning because the funding source for those projects was placed there at the end of fiscal year 2024. Uh, there's a $50 million transfer from your ed fund to your capital projects fund. Uh, it's important to understand that the capital projects fund at the beginning of fiscal year 24, so if you go a rear, uh, a year actually had a deficit, fund balance, was a need to identify a funding source for the committed, um, projects that were being wrapped up by the district. So really at the end of the day, uh, that deficit spend in there isn't concerning because there was probably getting fund balance to service that and ending the year with a $5.8 million reserve in the capital projects fund. And then lastly, your fire prevention in, like safety fund, uh, is a highly restricted fund. Um, the, the, the resources within there can really only be used on health and life safety projects that are approved by the state board. Uh, it hasn't had a tremendous amount of activity, uh, just some investment income and then of course some, some net activity related to property tax collections. But, um, you know, $3.3 million ending reserve in that particular fund. Couple other things can be pointed out is that within the annual financial report form, it's a state regulatory report, there's a financial profile score. It's a compilation that the state board uses to assess the, the general financial position of school districts. And there's multiple criteria that are in there, you know, fund revenues, fund balance reserves, days of cash on hand, um, percentage of long-term debt outstanding related to your state's term debt limit are just a few of the metrics. But it's essentially a four-point scale. The highest, the highest, um, score that you can receive is a four and the highest rating that you can receive is what they call recognition. So at the end of fiscal year 24, um, the district had a 3.8 out of 4, which was a recognition status. Of the fiscal year 25, AFR has a score of 4.0 out of 4.0, um, which teaches you a recognition. So, you know, I've, I've worked with the school district in, you know, different capacities over the years more recently as, um, you know, your auditor. So I have, I have a pretty good understanding of your financial position and I think where you look at your, your fiscal year 25 results in light of where fiscal year 24 was. Fiscal year 24 was, you know, a $50 million transfer out of the ed fund to the capital projects fund to kind of finalize this massive facility update that was going on for, for several years. Um, you, you, you move that $50 million out, you, you edit the $5.8 million left in the capital projects fund. I know there's still some things that are going on in fiscal year 26. You know, the, the general fund had a, an increase of $10.3 million. So you're kind of building those reserves back up within that fund. You know, your, your, your financial profile score actually has improved during fiscal year 25. Um, but you know, there's always a storm brewing, right? Because like Cook County hasn't released their property taxes. So like these fund reserves are really critical when things like that happen. You know, if Cook County doesn't pay the taxes on time, you're living off of these reserves for a long period of time. So yes, these high points in your, in your fund balances really become, you know, low points quickly when, when things don't go as planned. So it's always important to kind of understand the holistic picture of the school district, the challenges that you have, you know, that really sometimes are outside of your control as well. So I'm more than happy to take any questions, thought across us or the financial statements at this time.
I have one question for Dr. Hill. The life and safety fund, that $3.3 million that we use it for the roof.
That is correct, that is correct.
Well, thank you very much for having me here tonight.
Thank you.
Happy evening.
Thank you, Vaygar Tilly. Next up is our treasurer's report. This is our overview of the district for five months. Um, as, uh, Vaygar Tilly just mentioned, um, there continues to be a tax delay, uh, a delay in the distribution of property tax revenue, um, from the Cook County. And at this time, we have not received that revenue. We don't have a timeline in reference to when that revenue will be distributed. Um, but we are continuing to monitor, um, that situation. Um, but at the moment, as of five months, we've only received 12% of our proposed revenue. So we are anxiously awaiting, um, for that distribution to take place, but it has not happened as of yet. In reference to our expenditures, we are at 39% right now. That's what's going out. So as you can see, at the moment, we have more going out than what we have coming in. Um, but it's our hope, once the distribution takes place, we will see a significant change in those numbers as well. That's it for our treasurer's report for November. Next up, we have our billables. Are there any questions regarding the billables? That's all I have today. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the superintendent's report, and it is a pretty fun. Um, and as you might notice, I have taken some of the things that I would normally present before meetings. Now that I'm meeting weekly with the Mondays, there's a lot of information there. So it's a shameless plug for people to tune in because we have some really great information there. But one, one thing that I did want to highlight is the upcoming holiday tournament. We have this, it is 16 teams will be participating in a four-day tournament. It's going to be the 64th annual, so this is a rich tradition. It's more than just baseball. It's an opportunity for the community to come together, for alumni to come together. It's, it's a great experience. I encourage all of you to attend, uh, and everyone listening to attend. The dates are December 26th, 27th, 29th and 30th. Some changes you'll see this year is we are relying heavily on our students. We're giving our students an opportunity to lead, to earn service credits and to be part of the, the magic that is our Proviso West Holiday Tournament. And I just want to, just a special thank you to the board members that have signed up, um, to volunteer. It's, it's appreciated. We have the majority of our administrators are signed up as well to support this, um, you know, this great tradition that we are continuing to hear. Next is, you know, we are coming on the end of the second sem- or sorry, getting ahead of myself. End of the first semester, uh, so next week's finals will be beginning. Uh, and then I just wanted to highlight where we are right now with freshman on track. And so extremely proud of the numbers that we're showing right now. However, still pushing because my goal is to get to 90%, which will be difficult. Uh, but I think it's something that this team of, of leaders, educators, students should go and, and we will get there. And I'm certain of it. Uh, but it is going to be a tall task because it's tall. And when I began, our freshman on track was at 61%, we ended last year at 71%. And as of right now, Proviso West is at, I'm sorry, Proviso East is at 74.5% of the freshmen on track. Proviso West is at 85.6% of students on track, freshmen on track. And at PMSA, we have 94.8% of our students on track. So this is a testament to the work that our teachers are doing. However, this is not a celebration, it's just a check-in. Uh, and we are going to continue to push. We are tracking our students currently, not just our freshmen, but all of our students that have failures, to understand why they're failing, to create specific plans for each of those students to recover those credits during second semester, to reduce the, the, the reliance on summer school recovery. Uh, so I just wanted to call your attention to that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention on the superintendent's report was something we talked about in the Committee of the Whole, but since then it had a, had a change in the direction for our, for the audit. All of the texts that we spoke about in the Committee of the Whole remain the same. We believe that this is an important, important work that needs to be done. Uh, but two shifts and, and, and changes that we're making in this is we want to be able to, uh, competitively bid this to the market and to see if we can get, um, more people to bid on this project, if we have it more research-based. And also, as we are aligning this to our strategic plan, which is being aligned to the five essentials, we would also like to see in this bid, um, how prospective, um, clients would be able to align the results of, um, an equity audit to the five essential survey as well, so it gets seamlessly being integrated into our strategic plan. Any questions?
Is there, um, thoughts on how long you want this to take? Or cap of, uh, what the bid would be for the price?
I don't believe we'll cap the bid on price, but we can put a general timeline. It starts, one, how long will the bid is gonna be out there, but how long, how long we want this process to take. And so that could all then be part of the bid as we build it. And I'll share that with you as we build up that, um, that, that bid specifications.
So we're still accepting bids?
We have not bid yet, but we will, yes. And so once that bid is created, I'll share the link widely. And so if you know of people that are out there that are interested, you can also share that with them. There are some, obviously some current laws that we have to follow. Make sure everybody's aware of that, but there is nothing wrong with sharing the link to a bid. Uh, moving on to information items, uh, I know we spoke about many of these in, uh, previously. The first one I wanted to spend a little bit more time on, this is, there was a public comment about Section 260, which is, we already have a policy in 260. And it's a, it's, it, there is a policy in our books currently about how, whether to remove it for board members. And it's, uh, our public comment was correct. The only person that can do this is the Regional Office of Education, or in our case, the Intermediate Service Center. However, what we are looking to do in, in, in this policy is just to further define specifically what willful failure for an official duty, duty. And in such, we are recommending in this policy that this failure to perform is not limited to these things, but things that we consider. Re-consecutive, um, absences from a board meeting, missing more than 50% of board meetings, um, failure to comply with mandatory board meetings, um, board, or board trainees, uh, or just conduct that disrupts or obstructs the board's ability to do their work. And so in this policy, we are not asking the Board of Education to take on the responsibility of removal of a board member that is not allowed in, 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 in school law, in code. But what it is saying is that we are further defining this so we can make a recommendation with reasons towards our Intermediate Service and Regional Office, uh, or Regional, Intermediate Service Center Superintendent. This is a first reading, so if there are any questions about this, please email me. We'll, we can force on through our weeklys, um, and we can update this. Molly, did you have a question?
I was just gonna ask, did this come from like a press policy? Or did this just come from like the history of it arriving? Because usually when we see things like this, it comes from like a press policy.
So this was a press policy, but...
It was.
Well, this at one point was a press policy.
Got it.
It is not a press 120. But with any, with any policy, the Board of Education can, can adapt them and, and, and choose to make, make changes to it as long as it aligns with the school code as well.
I, I do have a question.
Yes.
Number one. Just run out an example. Um, if you're on your way to a board meeting and all of a sudden you get an emergency call and you have to turn around, say it's a family member that became ill or there was a car accident. How do you define excuse? Because my priority is not on this board, my priority is on my family member, to be clear. How do you, if I, define excuse? If I'm not there and I'm in the emergency room, I'm not gonna pick up the phone and call and say, "I'm in the emergency room with my loved one." How do you, how do you define that? What is excuse?
Well, I think it's just prior notice or notice, letting us know that you're not going to be there. Or in the case that you can't communicate even after the fact, just letting us know that you're here. Just letting the board president or the board secretary know. What we're trying to avoid is just board members.
No-show.
No-shows and not being responsible.
Okay.
But we understand there are things that happen in your life. This is a voluntary position that we are very thankful that you have signed up to do. But we just want to make sure that your participation is reflective of the commitment and that, that, that all board members of the community feel aware of the circumstances.
And we are all elected and it is our duty to attend. And, you know, the community elected us, it is our duty to be here and fulfill our duties as much as we can, right?
Yeah.
Yes, like happens. You all are gonna miss a week. Uh, but consistency in showing up and being considered when you can't be here or emergency happens, how we, how does that translate?
So, a question. So right now, the current policy reads that the majority of the board determines that a board member has willfully failed to perform his, or official duties. It makes, so is this new policy basically to make sure it's outline what the official duties are? Because I think our duties are way more than what we are proposing in there, so, um...
I think this is not replacing, it's adding.
It's just adding, it's just further defining what, so when we say willful failure to perform official duties, right? And so when you look at that terminology, it could be confusing as well, what's an official duty? And so we're saying your official duty is showing up to these, right? Not missing three in a row, coming to at least 50% of the duties in a, in a, in an academic year. Um, and, and doing your trainees, right? And again, superintendent, Board of Education, Board President cannot remove a board member. And again, superintendent, board of education, board president cannot remove a board member. The only person that can do that is the, the regional office of education or the intermediate service center, which we are a part of. And so we don't act, we're looking for in this policy to take any additional powers. It's just clearing up this language of what willful failure to perform official duties are.
So it's not Trump-like sort of script?
Well, we don't have, I, I mean, from what I see, I don't see any concerns with all of us performing our duties as outlined, so.
Yeah, this is not a targeted.
It's not a targeted thing, it's just to clarify so that we understand what expectations are and we all know to communicate. And that's pretty simple, right? Like our families come first, we have priorities over this position, and as long as we communicate, we're good. That's my understanding.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So we will see this two more times before we take, uh, before we move to approve. So happy to have more conversations around this. Um, in keeping with the spirit of policy revisions, um, at the last board meeting, there was some, uh, we got some feedback around our student board member. And so in that, I sent you a, a document that was color-coded to show some of the differences in, in, implementing some of the feedback that I heard from the board of education. So with this, um, not making it just for students that are in student council, but allowing the student board member to be part of a school-wide election. We are still asking for some form of good standing from, from the students. So, you know, two point oh, now with no suspensions, um, and having a attendance rate of ninety percent. I had a conversation also with president of Trident, because this is the person I know that also has student members on their board, and they also require, uh, good academic, good academic standing for their student board members as well. Um, but we, in there, we also created a, a system for an alternate. So in case, for whatever reason, a student board member is not able to serve, um, we would have a, a process to have that alternate, so likely the, the second highest vote getter in that election. And then if there is no alternate available, then having a special election would be allowable through this process. Um, any questions? So like the previous, we'll see this one, two more times, and then that third time we'll get it. Um, and as I said, keeping with the spirit, there is the press plus issue one-twenty. I am not going to go through every single one of those. But also it is language or alignment to new laws that have passed. Uh, but if you do have any questions, happy to take them. And then the other information items, um, the, I know Stephanie Yarza spoke about the Patrick Lady Farm, uh, pharmaceutical program here at Proviso. It seemed to be like a really great opportunity for us to do something a little bit creative and innovative. Are there any questions about this program? Moving on would be the Proviso East tennis courts. And so as you know, I've just got Principal Hall's attention here. Um, those courts are well, well past their usable time. And so it goes beyond just that of a facelift, we will need to do full re-instruction on this. And so we are in the process of putting this up to bid, um, and to, to see who the most, um, and to explain what, what it means to be, um, a responsible bidder. And that will be the process we follow here. Are there any questions?
So is, is it going to be a nice Proviso East blue, the courts?
Well, I don't know. Purple goes really well with, with the colors. Uh, as we spoke about in the committee of the whole, we're also looking to, um, purchase additional real care babies. These are the, the babies that we use in our course to teach our students about parenthood. These are very lifelike, um, dolls, they, they simulate, like, even your child. Um, the current ones we have right now are beyond their useful life. Their useful life is typically seven, eight years. Uh, so we are looking to purchase, uh, to replace these. They were last purchased in twenty sixteen and then this would cost of around thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Those dollars would be nine-year-olds now.
What's that?
Those dollars.
Those dollars would be nine-years-old, right?
That are graders.
Any questions? All right, moving on to summer curriculum writing, as we spoke about in the past, um, looking for a total investment of around ninety-nine thousand dollars to do this work. Part of that would be, um, title-one allocations, part of our student allocations. And though this would be for our courses that we, you know, some of the newer courses and, and, um, resources that we recently have purchased, or for courses that we have not done provisions, um, in some time. We would be, as we're doing this, looking at a universal, um, I'm sorry, the backwards design. So this is what we consider the, the end monitoring. So looking at what the assessment is and then building backwards with that. Um, but we would also want to align all of our new curriculum writing to our Proviso instructional framework with the red and white, um, and that is something that we presented that was put in place last year. Are there any questions? And then moving on to a pool items, we have, first up, our AED machines as presented in the committee of the whole. Are there any questions about the need for these purchased?
May I have a motion to approve the purchase of new AED machines for Proviso East and Proviso West from Second Chance Cardiac Solutions, Inc., in the amount of fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, as recommended by our administration? Mr. Dr. Fisher, please call roll.
Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Higson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher, aye. Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Smith, absent, carried.
And a fourteen?
Next is the REE-180 pilot. This is, as we discussed in the committee of the whole, is an item that we're excited about. This is looking to re, transform our study hall programs into an academic enrichment period, which better aligns with the spirit of what this program was meant to be in the first place. Um, we're doing, we're, we're looking to pilot this program for second semester. We'd be doing this pilot in alignment with District Eight-Nine, which is also looking to pilot in this program. REE-180 is a, is a, is a known entity, they're a known program. There's rich research around, um, the effectiveness of this program. We will ensure that all of our teachers that are using this program are effectively trained before we implement this, and we are continuing to have conversations on how to do this. Uh, it is a program that is highly prescript, prescriptive, so that although it is a, a reading program, you do not need to be a reading certified teacher to do this. Um, we are also, in addition to REE-180, we still have IXL that would be targeting our tier-one students during the academic enrichment period and REE-180 with me for our tier-two and our tier-three students. Are there any questions?
May I have a motion to approve the purchase of REE-180 instructional materials, digital licenses, and professional learning services for implementation during the academic enrichment period at a total cost not to exceed eighty thousand dollars, as recommended by administration? So, second. Dr. Fisher, please call roll.
Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Higson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher, aye. Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith, absent, carried.
And a fourteen?
Next is the approval for
The actual concern is. May I have a motion to terminate the employment of security guard Mr. C. Donaldson for theft of a student's money in line to the administration during a subsequent investigation, as recommended by administration?
So moved.
Second. Dr. Fisher, please call roll.
Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Higson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher, aye. Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith, absent, carried.
And a thirteen?
Uh, our last pool item here, um, to present is graduation required recognition for NSA students. As we know, we've always had recognition for NSA students, sorry. Um, for our PMSA students, this is just ensuring that each year our NSA students will be fitted with regalia at graduation so that they will be, um, recognized this year. Previous years, we've had, um, differing ways to recognize students and sometimes not at all. So this will memorialize, um, through the board action, how we will be, um, identifying and celebrating our NSA students at Proviso East and Proviso West.
Second. So may, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to recognize mathematics and science academy graduates with mandy on as presented? So, move second. Dr. Fisher, please call roll.
Uh, Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Higson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher, aye. Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith, absent, carried.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes of November twelfth, twenty twenty-five for a meeting? So, move second. Uh, please call roll.
Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Higson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher, aye. Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith, absent, carried.
Uh, may I have a motion to approve the bill list submitted to the board mandated December ninth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of five million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents? So, second. Please call roll.
Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Higson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher, aye. Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith, absent and carried.
May I have a motion to approve the December ninth, twenty twenty-five personnel report including the hiring, resignation, separations, stipend positions, and days of absences? So, second. Please call roll.
Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Higson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher, aye. Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith, absent, carried.
Uh, Dr. Fisher, can you please read the FOIA report into the record, item nineteen of the thirty?
Between November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, there have been three FOIA requests received by the district. Those FOIA requests were submitted by Anthony Walt, Freda McKay, and Stephen Levine. I apologize if I mispronounced any names. Um, those three requests have been fully responded to the district in accordance with the Illinois Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you. Is there any old business? Any new business? Right now, can I get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So, but all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight twenty-five PM. I'm going to write that down. You can circle it and start.
Great.
And write it down.